Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. So can I have a video with you? Not just so, but going into number.
Yeah.
That's my mom.
Billy, how are you? I want money. I want money.
I want money.
I want money.
Does someone owe you money?
I'm excited to.
Well, if you send your extension order to the right people.
Oh, who'd you send it to? The wrong person.
Yes. Don't. Just one Carolina. That's the second time today. Sing two.
Do I need to see the first one?
What is it, what two?
Sing two.
Sing.
Sing.
Oh, I don't think so. Have you seen both? I've never seen them.
It's like everyone always think that movie secret.
Yeah, they do a really good job with that. They really do.
That'd be like.
Oh, yeah, it's great. I like, I like the first one.
Oh, I love that. I've never seen them. I just love the.
You're welcome.
Yeah. It was like, oh, it's animated, remember singing on it.
Put you on my.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's fun. There's, there's nothing to hate about it. I think, I think the little koala guy is Matthew McConaughey, I think. And like seeing his voice going out of water is a great thing. So, yeah. Brett, I started writing for Steph.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, he, he actually probably agreed.
I mean, I actually sent it to you guys.
I think. I think.
I'll process this when I get back.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, I, I think what actually, it was sent to me. I feel like it's taken like a text picture of it from Steph. But no, the way I, the way I put it in the text was that it came into you. You said to me, Steph, review. I'm gonna put in a stipulation, he doesn't agree with it. I'll put it in otherwise, it'd be an already issued review previously. So, it was sort of kept administratively. And. Is that the end of the day? Yeah. Are you gonna work through it? No, we sent it to her. If we had sent it to Erin, it would have been really awkward. Because it already issued a determination. So. Yeah, we also kind of muddy the waters a bit, which is not bad.
Yes, they are.
Yeah. Oh, he's right. Do you need me to address anything?
You don't need, I know.
I didn't see anything.
I mean, everybody, like, everybody's familiar with everything.
Yeah, yep.
I'm not, I don't know anything.
Just in case.
Yeah.
No, I, I think the IT folks are running back and forth.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, or you.
Did you?
She tried to do property that call.
Yeah, well.
Can you back?
That's what the nicest.
His stories. That guy's stories. Yeah, every, everybody is crazy. I was talking to Hannah with you, turning to the other side, he just had, this was bad. He was like the whole school. It's like, really should like taste and smell.
Yeah, it was very low.
Yeah. That, that, that string, that string is going back down again. Crazy string. Yeah. Like, like off to work another time too. These people who are like, still have levels, they, they must just have like. They don't want to go to work. They don't have kids, because otherwise it's like. Like. But to miss, to miss that much work and then it would be like. We, we at least were able to, to work during a workday. Although maybe not as like crisp, crispliness. Yeah, she was, for one day she was sick, really sick. Really, really high fever. I was, I. Yeah, well, so, so, so I was sick. But Sarah was pregnant. So. We had to, when Lily got sick, we had to keep Lily away from Sarah. So yes, Lily and I both sick like, and then Sarah, that's the positive part of the day. So.
Oh, weather?
She was great. Yeah, we have our 20 week next week, so. That's like the big one.
Birthday's man.
Yeah, yeah. My sister had her baby last night. Zoe, Z O I.
Okay.
Yeah. It's gonna be, I don't know how long it's gonna be till we can see her. I'd like to do it sooner rather than, this will start straight here in the end of August. So like, I wonder a little before that happens. Once that happens, Zoe's just constantly staying up. Yeah, I mean, she's only gonna go like two days a week and whatever, her nanny can't work. But she's not gonna be so sick. I feel so bad for her. She's getting every single thing that's good for her. Because she's never been up. Sarah coming to the, to the Staples the other day, her mind like this. We walked into the, to the store with her like. She literally walked in, she was like.
Well, it's very funny.
Yeah, for a different reason.
Yes.
Yeah, she doesn't, yeah, she's. I think she's gonna have fun in this place, so. Get to be around more kids. And she sees her other, her neighbors who like sometimes fight up and down on her own. And their parents are nice.
Dead from 12 o'clock. Sometimes we, now you're fully charged at 12 o'clock. Dead again now.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
It's by the 99.
Completely dead.
I think that's right. Somebody, somebody, somebody was talking to me about that today. In the context of book bans. And, but not the translator. We're all with, like apparently parents now. There's always like orders, your message boards. And they'll be like, they'll be like, I noticed one last word, it's like this, this. Here are these horrible excerpts from it. It's mostly the excerpts, it's not particularly crazy or anything like that. And they'll post it on the message boards. And then these parents are like super involved. And they'll go and search their kids' library and things. They have a look. Then they try to get it banned. Like, our new associate started on Monday, all she's done is process it. And I keep seeing like printouts of the copier. Books are definitely crazy. They should not be banned. No, they're, they're, yeah. Yeah, they're like trashy, like July, yeah. Make sure we're how we got word like to the end.
Good morning, Carl. That's where I'm at. I'm doing that twice today. So. And it's gonna be good night. Sweet dreams.
Let's go, okie, okie, okie.
On what?
The, the talent wants to call Britt. There's a lot of people she issues who are right. So what I'm doing to avoid that is mattering into a stipulation with it. So that's, I, I wrote it on the show. So I'm gonna work on a step tomorrow. And then I'm gonna take a look at it from the borough's perspective. But it's not a big deal, it's just.
What's he want to break because of the fact that she said?
Yeah, yeah, so basically it's a, yeah. Break, break up the application. Set it to seven, just that one really. Doorbread said it had to be rejected. Broke it down. That's pretty much it.
Oh, I think she's rejecting it.
I absolutely think. She would do great. She would be great. So I'll send it to you tomorrow before it goes out.
Okay.
I'm also gonna put, I'll put some stuff. I'll, I'll put some stuff in there around you too. I'll be like, this was all done in the direction of race.
Something tells me that's gonna be the case anyway.
That you'll get blamed for it. All right, thanks for that.
It's already vested in me and hereby declare this meeting of the Conshawken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before. Britt, can you do roll call? Thank you.
Councilmember Chatino.
Present.
Councilmember Serna.
Here.
Councilmember Kingsley.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Elam.
Here.
Vice President Sokolovski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is under land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. The first, I'm gonna read the first two items, the only two items. They are approve and adopt the July regular meeting minutes and approve the July ending treasuries report and accounts payable. So if council is so inclined this evening, the first motion would be to approve and adopt July regular meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next motion is to approve the July ending treasures report and accounts payable in the amount of $481,470.
Start again. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next items are under unfinished business. The first is consider approving a shuttle management proposal with GVS. So the motion this evening would be to approve a shuttle management proposal with GVF in the amount of $15,000.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consider approving zoning escrow releases. The motion this evening, if council is inclined, is to approve zoning escrow releases for 116 West Second Avenue in the amount of $275.75 and 509 Spring Mill Avenue in the amount of $279.47.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is under new, new business. It is consider approving the third addendum to the police collective bargaining agreement for 2023 to 2025. So if council is inclined this evening, the motion is to approve the third addendum to the police collective bargaining agreement for 2023-2025.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to consider regulation 2022-21 designating a section 504 officer. So the motion is to approve resolution 2022-21 designating Chris Sittler as the section 504 officer.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone this evening for a public comment? On anything? So for the record, there is no public comment for any, any agenda items or any other items. So Mayor Aronson?
All right, thank you, President Leonard. So over the COVID pandemic, Sarah and I started a Conchis Strong Bingo series to support our local businesses. We bought gift certificates as bingo prizes and gave all the proceeds to Colonial Neighborhood Council. It has become so popular over the past couple of years that we're continuing it indefinitely. So this year's bingo will be on Thursday, September 1st, 6:30 PM at the Conshawken VFW. Please see my social media for details or check out our website at www.konshawkenmayor.com/bingo. I'm also always happy to work with our police department to organize the annual Conshawken Community shredding event. Detective Walter held an ID theft prevention training for the community a few years ago. And reminds everyone that this is a great way to securely get rid of sensitive documents. Please join us Saturday, September 24th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Caldwell Banker, 1207 Fayette Street. And we hope to see everyone there. And then finally, thank you again to everyone who joined us at the Reading Fiddles for Conshawken Night. And of course, thank you to our local businesses who helped sponsor the event and provide free tickets to residents. It was an absolutely beautiful night and we hope to see everyone at the ballpark again next year. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Ms. Allen?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
Nothing.
Yes, I do have something. I would just like to make, announce that we're going to have a movie night in the park in Aubrey Collins Park on Elm Street. That's gonna be Friday, August 26th at 7:45. They'll be showing the movie Sing Two. And it is Bring Your Own Chair and Blanket. But there will be, I think you can purchase snacks from the snack shack that will be on location. So please come out. That's it. Thank you.
Tina?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice President Sokolovski?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Metz?
Yeah, I do... The state police hosted an operation over the weekend called Operation My Hulk. And it began with some refresher training at Citizen Bank Park. And then all the participants, state and local, went through the area and targeted DUI enforcement. This region of the state, it was statewide. This region of the state had the highest numbers. And Officer Wesco represented the Conshackin Police Department in that operation. And as a result, there was 532 contacts, 78 DUI arrests, 34 misdemeanor and felony arrests, four warrant arrests. So, good weekend, good program. And it said it was all across the entire state.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Metz. And with that, if there is nothing else this evening from the public, I would say meeting adjourned.